Good evening and welcome to the public hearing for the budget this evening. I'll ask, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to rise for the pleasure.
The pleasure leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll do the introduction of members. I'll start this way around.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Ted Novio, Millville.
Erin Pinaco, Millville.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Joe Spagna, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pill, Gallerani Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
All right, next up we have Consent Agenda A. I'll take a motion to approve the warrants. Motion made by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Tara Locken. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And to approve the minutes from February 11th, 2025.
Some of.
Motion made by Tara Locken.
Second.
Seconded by Matt Catalano. Any further discussion?
Who's Chuck?
Oh, sorry, Chuck. Okay, maybe it is my fault that these names are not getting recorded correctly. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Public forum, there isn't anyone here at this. Is this the only, is this the only agenda for this?
Yes, as you're foretelling.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna pass over public forum because at 6:30, I think we have a donor, someone's gonna explain a donation. And, and as we get going to the, on the agenda, we have Isaiah Lucia Scholarship.
Yep.
And so Julie, is my, the mother, is gonna come in and just say a few words.
Oh, very nice.
Yeah. So I'll just put that into public, well, she can come under that, but just to, so I guess we'll get right into then the public hearing. And it's this time I'll take a motion to open the public hearing for the school budget.
Some of.
Now, a motion made by Tara Locken.
Second.
Seconded by Erin. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Superintendent, you have a buzzet, excuse me, budget presentation?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see all of you. Second time this week for some of you, the fourth time for Matt. But it's very nice to see everyone. We have this evening for the school committee and for our community, those tuning in, a presentation regarding our fiscal year '26 draft budget. However, we did spend quite a significant amount of time on Monday evening at our joint meeting with the boards of selectmen and the finance committees in our school committee, of course, in both towns, really walking through the budget, all the materials, the revenues, all of it, expenditures, in a very kind of methodical, slow pace. And so this evening, we have a bit of an abridged version of that. Kind of thinned out Monday's presentation a little bit because it was public, it was out there, it was, you know, livestreamed, it's on our YouTube channel. So tonight, we have a very similar presentation, just scaled back a bit. So that those family and friends that tuned in on Monday, you'll hear a little bit of a shorter version, but it still has all the important information, impertinent information as it relates to next year's budget. And again, thank you to Joe and Jill, who are gonna walk through this with me. No. Oh, I got it. There we go. Just needed the odd book. So as everybody is very much aware, that perhaps either tuned in on Monday or they've been following our budget process from the very beginning, which for us was in December when we had our first public conversation about forecasting some of those needs. We always start with our district strategy. We are in our last year of our current district improvement strategy. And very excited that we'll be bringing to the school committee, I think in our next meeting in March or April, an updated strategy for July 1. So the school committee and our family and friends at home know how very important this is to us and that everything we do anchors back to our improvement strategy, including, of course, our budget. Our fiscal plan needs to match our instructional plan for the school system. With that, the other pieces that really helped guide our process, again, our blueprint, our district strategy, our 2024 accountability and MCAS data, the feedback that the school committee provides to me through my evaluation. I think the committee knows at this point, I know the community does, I take that very serious. And we see evidence of that feedback showing up in our, in our future forward plans. And so as we look ahead to school year '25, '26, you'll see evidence of that showing up in our budget. And of course, likewise with our school community surveys from our students, staff and families. Again, incorporating some of their feedback into our next steps is very much alive and present in our FY '26 budget.
So again, I know we've all seen this slide quite a bit, just our demographics of our student population and kind of percentage of some of the subgroups we have. And to make note, we did put at the bottom here that, you know, our overall low income has actually grown about 16% over the last few years. And again, for those students who have reported. At the last meeting, I did talk about, we had mentioned our English language learner population right now is about 3.2. That is growing. And I know someone had asked the question about languages, and actually I checked into that. And we actually have 10 different languages across, in our district, and students from 17 different countries. And our language is Portuguese right now. Our next slide, again, our state determined measures. We are a district that is making moderate progress toward our goals. And we also, what's really important to bring to light is we are a district that has no indicators for any state assistance or intervention that is required. And as I explained, there is an accountability system with the Department of Education that looks at our attendance, our graduation, our suspensions, our progress. Again, no findings there. And the other thing to mention is we have tiered focus monitoring on a regular basis for several different areas, including special ed, civil rights, title ones. We have indicators, they take a look at our data for students who are entering the district as preschoolers and who are exiting as high school. And again, none of these areas, including English language learner education, none of our finding, we have no, we've had no findings over the last several years for any of the programs that we have in place, which is a really great thing. You'll see here, I won't go through every single one of them, but our MCAS performance and our clustered grades, and you can see it's just in line with the state averages. But the thing to bring notice to, there were some areas as a district that we actually exceeded the targets that were set by the Department of Education for us. One of them was in the area of science, where we exceeded all targets. Also, our absenteeism rates and our English language acquisition targets. And these are things that we continue to look at and target to make sure that we continue to meet those, meet those standards and those targets from DESI. What's driving our budget? We currently have, and we always say, we're just over that 1,500 student mark. And we actually, because in my office, we also have our student welcome center, the registration, we actually are getting new registrations on a daily basis. So we do have that, you know, influx of students that are coming in. So again, just over 1,500 and growing every day. We have just under 50% of our students who are classified as high need. So they may fit into several different subgroups. With our increase of student enrollment, we have had an increase for our students with English language learners. We've been in the 40s over the last few years and now we're into the 70s. Students placed out of district, those out of district tuitions are definitely growing, probably about anywhere between 6% to 14% every year. But over the last couple of years, our out of district placements have increased a bit, not because of our programs that we're developing. We've had students who have moved into the district, who were already outplaced or they were placed by agencies. So, you know, it kind of came to us. We didn't place our students out. Another thing, I know there'll be some more detail. We've talked about maintaining our class sizes. So we are looking for additional staff. And we currently have 2.6 English language learner teachers. We're looking to increase that to three total, so to increase the budget by a point four there. Implementation, I know Jason just mentioned that of our strategic plan, which may be our blueprint 3.0, right? We're up to the third. We are also looking, we are refining our core literacy programs. We're looking to make some adjustments to the program. We're also looking to strengthen and really implement writing from our preschool all the way up through grade 12. And again, I'm sure Jill will get into a little bit more of our five-year revised capital plan. Some other factors that are driving, of course, health insurance, those are things we're still looking into. There's always some increase, but we're looking to try to minimize that with our, looking into all programs. As I mentioned before, collaborative and private tuition increases for students who may be out of district, that's always on the rise. We've had that annual cost increase as well as the increase in student enrollments. Facilities needs, we know this is an ongoing communicate, ongoing conversation about the high school as well as our short-term projects, contractual obligations, and our MLC, our minimum local contribution. And I know that, we'll get into, a little bit more into the budget on that, and of course, our transportation costs.
So looking at the strategic priorities as it relates to materials and resources, and again, this is, none of this information is new. And as a matter of fact, this is probably the most repetitive piece of our discussion point because these are the things that we thought we were going to need to prioritize and after all of our budget, internal budget meetings with our cost center managers over the, throughout the fall. So we've been talking about these since December. But at a high level, looking at that revised literacy program, again, we're doing a lot of work around writing. So we're gonna see a two-year program with that as far as our literacy committee is concerned. Continued refinement with our assessment system. Looking forward to that meeting on March 18th with our district instructional leadership team, which includes the best part, which is our students. So they will come and give us feedback on their performance and what they think is working and what's not. And so we'll get deeper into our current assessment system and see what we need to kind of quarter turn with that feedback. Again, our capital plan, we have two items from our year one priorities that we're moving forward. And you'll see those warrants in front of you this evening, and we'll review those momentarily or at some point this evening. An increase in programming, summer programming after school, frankly, before school. We are still running our before-school kindergarten programs. We have about 18 students for that, which is great, coming on a consistent basis. And then, of course, supporting in general our overall student behavioral needs. Staffing, as Jill referenced, these are the numbers, and I know we've looked at these at various workshops. So I'll move fairly quickly through this, but these are the numbers of students enrolled at each grade level rolled up for next year. So these are all the projections for next year based on this year's student enrollment and as far as the staffing is concerned, based on this year's staffing numbers. So currently, we have four second grade teachers, we have four third grade teachers. Our second grade classes right now are rate around 25 because we have about 100 students. And again, that'll be next year's third grade. One of the challenges we have with these two particular grades is if we see an influx of students, we're gonna see those numbers climb. So we are looking to increase the classroom positions, one for second and one for third grade for next year so that we would actually have five kindergarten, five first grade, five second grade and five third grade. That would maintain our classes rate around 20, 2022 students. It gives also that wiggle room in case we get some move-ins, which we tend to. For whatever reason, this year, our current school year, it was second grade. They all came the last couple of weeks in August. So that's why we saw that bump in numbers. If we see that again without adding those two positions, those numbers could continue to climb, which we don't want to have happen. Moving up to our middle school, class sizes, we are gonna maintain as they are listed here. We're not asking for any new classroom positions, but we do need an additional enrichment teacher. And if there are any questions about that, Dr. Remka is here, could certainly speak to that. But right now, we're looking at, I believe, a world language teacher to really help work, particularly with the students that are not opting into chorus and not opting into band. I'm glad to say we have a good problem in that we have a lot of students that are opting into those programs, but it does leave a group of students who, you know, who haven't opted into that without an elective. Although Dr. Remka and her team really did a nice job this year of putting together a program for those students. And recently, as you know, the, we discussed with the school committee, we added for the second semester virtual middle school, which we had 25 students enrolled and really enjoying it. So with all of that, we're looking to add one elective teacher for the middle school and one second grade and one third grade for Millville Elementary. And then for the high school, and Ms. Fallis is here, if there's any specific questions on any of these FTEs, any of these additional positions. And we're gonna hear from Ms. Fallis anyhow, a little bit later in the agenda, about our career pathways and course options. There's lots of information to share tonight on that. But before we get to that, our numbers next year for the high school look very strong. Every one of our classes is over 100 students, which is, again, is a very good problem. We typically have about 60 applications to BVT. This year, we have 22. So the school committee's decision to move the kids, to support moving the kids to the eighth graders to the high school is bearing out and is showing good, good outcomes as it relates to enrollments. We're really pleased about that. Once you get into that culture and climate, kids wanna stay. And I think we're seeing that, at least this year, which is a really good sign. So we're pleased to share that. With that, however, we do need to add a science teacher, a social studies teacher and an electives teacher. And again, I know Ms. Fallis will, will, will get into the electives side of this. The science and social studies is a little more kind of direct as it relates to what the position would do. It's also important to just note, and Joe will talk a little bit about this, but in last year's reductions, we had eliminated 18 and a half positions. 11 of those were classroom teachers. The rest were administration or student support positions. So of those 11, we want to bring six positions back. But again, in a very targeted, succinct, succinct way. Joe?
So getting into the financial piece, if you can move to the next slide to.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you. Our total budget for FY '26 is $32,54,718. That's a 7% increase over last year's budget. Of that 7%, we have various revenue streams that we've looked at to make sure we can minimize the impact to the towns. The, we will be using 100% of our approved E and D, less the $50,000 that we've approving for OPEB use. So that's $458,696. Our combination, we did see an increase in our Chapter 78, basically because we moved out of hold harmless, which was a nice bump for us this year, a little over $600,000. And that's all due to mainly the enrollment increasing that we're seeing. So we take a look at all the state and federal revenue offsets that we have. They total $14,818,340 of the 7% that we'll be using. Then we look at some other revenue sources, some of the special revenue funds that we have. We're gonna be doing some one-time uses of some miscellaneous.
Should we be looking at this, Joe, the proposed budget sheet now?
Yes, but I was just summarizing that, or should we go through line by line?
Oh, that's okay. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You can keep summarizing, but we're on the proposed budget sheet.
Yeah, I apologize. We have various revenue sources that are other sources. Some of them are one-time use sources. For example, we have miscellaneous one-time revenues of $90,000. Those are various special revenue funds that have been carrying year over year that aren't really utilized any longer. We'll be consolidating those funds into one and using them to offset some of our expense. We'll be using some revenue from, from the athletics fund and our pre-K fund, rental of classrooms, Medicaid we'll be using, and our athletic and music user fees. We'll be utilizing those funds also. One thing I did want to mention briefly is our regional transportation in school and, and charter tuitions and things. The regional transportation we're gonna be using is $856,952. We're in a good place right now. We're, we're funding that fund, basically 100% of the previous year's reimbursement. So that, that'll help offset a lot of the expenses. We're also taking some steps to pre-purchase several months, three months' worth of out-of-district tuition, which Jill had mentioned is an increase to the district by pre-purchasing $350,000 with this year's funding. We're gonna minimize the impact for FY '26 from there. So with those changes and those revenue offsets, that's 7%. The increase to the Blackstone assessment is 3.95% and for Millville is 2.54%. And one thing I'd like to point out, if you look at the minimum local contribution on the schedule you have, where we compare '24 to FY '26, the state is requiring a 5.5% increase to both towns for the minimum local contribution. So if you look at, for Blackstone, for example, that's a $467,166 increase. But the overall increase because of our offsets and the change in our capital, which I will go into in a minute, it's only a $471,022 increase overall. And with Millville, the minimum local contribution is $148,107, based on what the state's requiring, they're actually seeing a decrease overall down to $99,557. Also including this form is the sheet that has the detailed budget lines. If you'd like to go through those, you can. And I've also put in the capital budget, which I'd like to go through now, unless you have any questions on any of that. Nope. So in the next slide, we show the capital assessments. So Blackstone is gonna see, as you know, the, I'll start with this. The middle school bond was paid off in August, so we see that reduction. But we did just, actually, we just received the funding yesterday too, for the feasibility study portion that the town is providing, the $500,000. That ban is now in place, so that includes the addition of this ban. With that, the net effect of, Blackstone's gonna see an 11% reduction in their assessment, as a capital assessment as compared to last year. And Millville's gonna see a 4% reduction. So the total capital assessment for both towns is $503,968. I did provide the breakout to show, if you'd like to take a look at it, exactly what makes up those dollars to each town. Another part of the five-year capital plan, as Jill had mentioned, one of the things that are driving the budget is our short-term capital needs. We have some aging equipment. We have some capital needs for the middle school. Out of the $1.3 million, if in a, in a, in a perfect world, we'd get all of that for next year. But that isn't the reality. We have about $1.3 million of needs, but we prioritize that down to just two that we felt that we really can't do without. The playground equipment for the middle school for $70,000 will give us age-appropriate equipment for the fourth and fifth grade that have moved up into the school. And then the, we have a plow truck in here for $120,000. The current vehicle that we have now is just rotting and becoming a money pit. We're putting a lot of money every year, since I've been here anyways, into this vehicle just to keep it running. I mean, the bed is literally rotted off. The sander isn't functioning properly. So it's time to replace that if we can. This is a step down in size because this will be, have more utility for the district. It doesn't have to be just sanding and plowing. We can utilize it throughout the district. And that's pretty much it, unless there's questions on any of that.
Yeah, yeah. And then the next steps are here, so.
Any questions?
I don't even know, what's the year on the truck that we're trying to replace? Just so.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's really old. I, I don't know the exact year right now. I think it's only a few, several years old. And it doesn't have a ton of miles because it was designated that could only be used to do the property that it was on. The problem is that it sits with the sander on it and it, it just rots the whole time. So I'm not even sure there's a lot of miles. There's probably 30, 40,000 miles on this vehicle.
It's overused.
It's like 15 years old.
That's.
But the problem is it sits.
That's considerable, yeah. And it's only one, it's one seasonal use, kind of thing.
Right.
Yep.
They have already taken, had a dump body on it.
It did, they didn't take it off.
Because it rotted. Repair the chassis and they just then mounted a sander on, on the actual chassis itself, so. Got a great motor. It's probably got 20,000 miles on it.
Yeah, we'll see if somebody, if we could sell it. Might be able to.
That's it? Anyone from the public like to address us on the budget, prepped as a pass, proud of this meeting? All right, hearing done, I will take a motion to close the public hearing. Some of, motion made by Matt. Seconded by Ted. Any further discussion? All those favor, in favor of closing the meeting, signify public hearing. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. All right, back to the, get back to the agenda. I'm gonna go back to public forum. We have Eric, I stand here. If you wanna come right up to the, as a donation to, we'll probably accept the next meeting. Eric, how are you?
Good, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Yeah, I have some computer equipment I'd like to donate to Blackstone, however you guys wanna use it. I have about 15 24-inch monitors. I have six ESOS. Those will probably be handy. I have some additional HDMI cables and a bunch of power strips, all slightly used. But instead of giving it to Best Buy, figure let's, you know, give it to the school, let you guys use it as you will. And I can arrange delivery whenever you, wherever you want it. I can make a delivery for it, but happy to do it.
That's great.
That's excellent.
Well, thank you.
I, I did send an email to Ms. Schaefer and also Jessica Sinclair, who's HR. Said she sits on the side of the IT resource where she is, but just waiting to hear back.
Okay. All right. And after speaking with you, the superintendent reached, they're aware of the.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. We really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Takes a village.
Takes a village, that's right.
Except donations all the time.
And, and then.
Be nice.
I'm gonna just take out of order the Isaiah Lucia Scholarship, and we have Isaiah's mom here. If you wanna come on, come right up to this table here.
Hello.
Hey.
So my name is Julie Lucia. This is Emma. I am here on behalf of my husband and myself. Our son Isaiah Lucia passed away in sixth grade at this very school in 2019. Isaiah would have been graduating this year with the class of 2025. We, we started Isaiah's smile scholarship in memory of Isaiah with a lot of help from Becky Boulay and all of our friends and family. One senior class, one senior from the class of 2025 will be getting $1,000 from Isaiah's smile scholarship. I hope to continue this for many years to come.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for Julie or?
That's great. Thank you.
More details to come. We just have to get things, questions. We're gonna do an essay, but that's pretty much it.
Well, thank you very much. I'll take a motion to accept the scholarship presented. Motion by Matt, seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll keep Isaiah's name in our, in our hearts, in our minds, in our history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just point out, the garden in front is in his memory, so.
Yes, thank you. I was just gonna say it, but.
Every day he's thought of when.
Yes.
Everyone enters and leaves the building, so.
I love that. Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, moving on. We're, no one else for public forum. Done moving on that. Now we can take a vote to certify the FY '26 budget. And this is a series of votes, actually.
Yes.
So we have a page with motions. And typically, we just go around the table. If we can start with Matt. And we'll start with Ted. We'll keep him on, on his toes over there.
If I can find it.
If I can find it.
Start with Matt.
I can start. That's fine.
He gave me a look. Ted, it's the easy one, that's why.
I'm not the first one, it's the shortest.
All right, motion, I move to adopt a gross operating budget for the 2025-2026 school year in the amount of $30,223,000.
Motion made by Ted. So moved. Seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous.
I move to apply the following reimbursements to reduce said gross operating budget for the 2025-2026 year. Chapter 70, $12,088,000. Regional transportation, $856,952. School choice tuition, $181,234. And charter school reimbursement, $222,116. Above reimbursements, total $13,340,310. The total operating budget for the 2025-2026 is $32,547,800.
Motion made by Erin.
Second.
Seconded by Tara Locken. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. I move to assess the amount of $12,54... Put these glasses on. $12,545,111 to the town of Blackstone to be applied to the operating budget for 2025-2026 year, which includes $8,980,523 for the minimum contribution, $1,145,028 in exclusionary costs, and $1,928,960 in supplemental investments.
Second.
I made a motion, seconded by Matt. All the, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous.
I move to assess the amount of $3,850,938 to the town of Millville to be applied to the operating budget for the 2025-2026 year, which includes $2,845,313 for the minimum contribution, $374,585 in exclusionary costs, and $631,040 in supplemental investments.
Motion made by Tara Locken.
Second.
Seconded by Erin Venaco. Any further, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it, unanimous.
I move to apply the following amounts to the gross operating budget for the year Excess and deficiency, $458,696. Medicaid, $190,000. Revenue from user fees, $82,000. Revenue from gate fees, $15,000. Revenue from classroom rental, $100,000. And revenue from pre-K tuition, $395,233.
A motion made by Chuck.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous.
I move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $339,983.53 to be assessed solely to the town of Blackstone, which includes $99,520.23 for the JFK Boiler Windows Project, $149,949,924.25 for the roof projects, and $90,539.05 for the BMR High Feasibility Study.
Motion made by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Tara and Erin. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous.
Move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $163,983.99 to be assessed solely to the town of Millville, which includes $67,689.29 for the Millville Boiler Project, $66,675.75 for the roof projects, and $29,618.95 for the BMR High School Feasibility Study.
Motion made by Ted.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous.
I move to certify the alternate presentation of the total budget representing only monies moving into and out of the general fund. This presentation will be used by the Department of Revenue in the calculation of excess and deficiency, E and D.
Motion made by Erin.
Second.
Seconded by Tara Locken. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it, unanimous. All right. I don't, rather smooth the...
It's done.
Yeah. Next up on the agenda is to approve the annual town meeting warrant articles, which we have updated ones in front of us, right? We're correct? Just as... With that, we can start this way. You can read them and then we'll read them. Matt, if, we'll start, there we can.
School committee stipends to see if the town will vote to authorize the members of the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District School Committee to be compensated for their services as such members, and to set the amount of said compensation at $1,500 per member and $1,800 for the chairman. Such compensation to be paid in three equal installments in the months of July, November, and March, provided, however, that no such installment shall be paid, A, to a member who is not in attendance at least 60% of the meetings of the district school committee, excluding, however, any meetings not attended by such members due to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, in the 12-month period prior to July 1, November 1, or March 1, as the case may be. If such member has been a member for 12 months, 12 months or, 12 months or more months prior to each of the said dates, or B, to a member who is, who has not attended at least 60% of the meetings of the district school committee, excluding, however, any meetings not attended by such member due to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, in the period prior to each of said dates, or take any other action relation heretofore.
Motion to accept the school committee warrant articles, school committee stipends by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this new language or exactly the same? I just don't remember the general law being in there before.
It's the same language.
It is, okay. Didn't we discuss not putting this in and doing what BBT does and adding, just having it on the warrant, right?
On the budget?
Right, when they approve line by line, they approve... The, the Millville one is listed separately on the BBT line.
This has to be, I don't know how, but this has to be by Mass General Law.
But BBT doesn't put it in.
For regional school districts, I just looked it up.
You did?
I did, actually. Yeah, because I, I actually just looked it up the other, the other day, and, and it has to be accepted by both towns, member towns at town meeting.
I know, I, I...
I, I probably looked it up for the same reason why you're asking that question.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? There's a motion to the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it, unanimous. Next will be OPEB.
Other post-employment benefits. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $24,650 into the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund of the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District established under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 32B, Section 20, said funds to be used only to pay some portion of health benefits for retirees of the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District.
Okay, Chuck, that's a motion, right?
Yes.
So Chuck made a motion for a warrant article regarding OPEB, as read by Chuck. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tara Locken and Ted. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it, it's unanimous. Hotman Playground. Read it in a motion.
I make the motion to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $17,255 for the purpose of designing, purchasing, and installing a playground at the FWH Middle School.
Motion made by Tara Locken. Seconded by Ted. God, I took off all your... It was, I thought it was a $70, oh, okay.
These are Millville, it's a Philly clarification.
That's right.
That's okay.
So motion by Tara Locken, seconded by Ted. And I just reminded my, thank you for reminding me that these are simply Millville's ends of the warrant article, which is clearly marked on the top of the... Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Let the record show that Kerry and Tara Scobie are present. Okay, next is, and so Kerry and Tara, we're, we're reading these as motions for the warrant articles to approve or on the last warrant article for the utility, for the utility truck, so you guys can catch up. These were a supplement to our packet, correct, tonight?
Yes, we had one change. So they may be... They're right in front of you one year.
Okay. So I'll, I'll take this one. I'll make a motion to see if the town will raise an appro, the town of Millville will raise appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $29,580 for the purchase of a plow utility truck for the use of the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District.
Second.
Make a motion, seconded by Tara Locken. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it, it's unanimous. Ted, I'll pass the Blackstone school stipend. If you want to just make a motion to accept the Blackstone school stipend as read by Matt for the Millville school stipend.
Make a motion to, for Blackstone to accept the school's committee stipends as read by Matt earlier. So moved.
Motion made by Ted.
Second.
Seconded by Kerry. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Carrie, OPEB? OPEB for Blackstone?
Yep. Make a motion to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $75,350 into the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, otherwise known as OPEB Fund of the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District, established under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 32B, Section 20, said funds to be used only to pay some portion of health benefits for retirees of the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District.
Motion made by Kerry.
Second.
Seconded by Erin. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it, it's unanimous.
I motion to see if the town of Blackstone will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $52,745 for the purpose of designing, purchasing, and installing a playground at the FWH Middle School.
Motion made by Erin.
Second.
Seconded by Kerry. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's passed, it's unanimous. And I will make a motion to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds the sum of $94,420 for the purchase, sorry, $90,420, $90,420 for the purchase of a plow utility truck for use by the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District.
Second.
Seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it, it's unanimous. So that brings us right down to... So right now, we're in school committee, item D, present ASCD proposal for July conference vote to approve for $1,700.
Okay, then.
Yes, yeah.
Dr. Rumka, you want to join us up? So some months ago, Kerry Purcell, you might remember Kerry from Focus Schools, had a conversation with Dr. Rumka and members of the instructional leadership team, and to see if we would be interested in bringing the good work that's happening with the student instructional leadership team to the national level, and present at the end of, very, very end of June, early July, at the ASCD conference in San Antonio, Texas. It's a very competitive process. There's many, many, many proposals that get submitted to this conference because it is such a, it is such a national draw, and Dr. Rumka's was accepted and approved. So we have a seat at the table should we decide we, we want to get BMR on the national stage. And Focus Schools has been gracious enough to not only split all of the costs with us, but actually pay for a third teacher to go with Dr. Rumka, the entire cost. So we are asking the school committee for $1,700 to be able to send Dr. Rumka and two of our educators to the San Antonio conference to present nationally, to educators from coast to coast. And Dr. Rumka, does any want to add to that? We did put in the packet, the printout, which is there for public review, which is really great, and your bio on there, which is exciting to see our name connected to that good work. But, okay, then, so what I had?
I'm just very thankful for the opportunity. I didn't think we would get pegged because it was hundreds of applicants and proposals. So we got pegged, I am very excited. We have come a long way from when we started, you know, implement that student IOT. We really didn't know the whole, the full scale of getting students involved. Why do they tell, like to tell you what to do? So we get to the point now, kids keep really getting involved, looking at the data and looking at programs. Please, they tell me, some of my programs need to step up a little bit. So we have a lot of conversation, and I think it would be great to share with, you know, other school districts, you know, nationwide, because we empower our students. They are the center of education, and they should have a voice at the table. So I'm very excited for the opportunities.
So if any of you are around on June 29th, on a Sunday, and you happen to be in San Antonio from 12:30 to 1:30.
It'll be hot.
Stop by Dr. Rumka's table if it's approved to see her and the presentation from our educator.
I'm hoping we'll get, like, updates on, like, social media or the, the website, the schools.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any need for additional chaperones?
No. Absolutely, as long as you pay your own way.
I'm just excited for the two teachers that been spending a lot, all this time, effort working with students. They're great.
And Jenny, who are those?
Oh, Megan Maury and Grace Martin. And they've both been teaching, oh, they came in with me, except Grace. We just talked about that. Grace came in a year after me. So Megan, six years, Grace, five years.
They've been doing that student IOT program with you from the start of it, too, right?
Yes, yes, yep.
It really has evolved. I mean, we were doing case studies and things in the beginning, and they actually approached the PTO early on to change some of their fundraising structures and things. I mean, the stuff that they do is amazing to now, where, you know, in a couple weeks, they'll be presenting to the district IOT. The kids present the information and next steps. It's really, it really is quite amazing. Student leadership at its finest. So the overall cost is $3,400 for two, and then Focus Schools is splitting that. So they're going to pay the $1,700, and they're paying 100% cost for the third person. So we, we really just need half of two of our staff to go on the trip, which is... So we, we really just need half of two of our staff to go on the trip, which is seventeen hundred dollars.
That's great.
Which is really awesome.
So I'll take a motion to approve the seventeen hundred dollar request for the ASCD proposal for July.
So moved.
Motion by Carrie, seconded by Tara Scobie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Enjoy.
Thank you.
And thank you for representing us.
Thank you.
Bringing us nationwide.
Principals.
And MSBA update.
I do this every time.
No, it's okay. I'll do it. Just a quick overview because there's a lot that's been going on, but we have spent quite a bit of time in, on the feasibility study portion that relates to what is called education visioning and really thinking about what is the academic plan that we want at the high school that's really going to drive the, kind of the physical plant, if you will. And so we have a team of about twenty-eight, thirty members that is this educational visioning committee that is a subsection of the school building committee, which of course, some of you, you know, are participating in that. We have students, we have staff, we have families, community members. It really is a great, again, you talk about the student involvement and student voice. The students and staff in that group have been very active, as have our parents. So we're really grateful for their time. And their meetings are long, you know, they're virtual, they're about two and a half hours. And again, I know many of you are on those, but it's a big commitment, particularly for our kids who have to turn around and get up, you know, at seven o'clock in the morning the next day and they're up till eight-thirty, you know, doing these virtual meetings. So we've had two of three. The third session of the educational visioning group is next Tuesday from three to six and it's in-person at the high school. So we're really excited to actually be together in the same space instead of just being on the screen. But running parallel to that, we have had two educational visioning sessions, actually this week, I believe it was Tuesday. Do I have that right?
It was.
Okay, all right. Tuesday, no, sorry, Tuesday afternoon, we had it with the staff members and then Tuesday evening, we had with our community members. At the evening session collectively with those friends that joined us online and those that were in person, we had around sixty participants. We had about thirty online and about thirty in person, give or take a couple either way. And the online kind of ebbed and flowed and it's actually so did the in-person. A couple of folks had to exit a little bit early. So all of that feedback has been really important. We have another big session next week, of course, not just the in-person with the education visioning committee, but we did not capture the number of staff that we wanted at our staff session, so we are going to do it with a captive audience during our professional development day. So we will have all of our grades four through seven, four through twelve, excuse me, staff, all of our Unit A staff, all of our Unit C staff, and we've allocated an hour of that time for them to go through this whole process. This is a really important step because essentially what David, who was our lead consultant for this does, and many of you participated in this, but for our friends listening at home that haven't and the committee hasn't had a chance to plug into that yet, he's really introducing these concepts, these kind of architectural concepts, like Main Street and streetscapes and, you know, all these different things that we have to think about and what we want to prioritize as far as kind of key design attributes. That's important because David's going to take all of that information and kind of aggregate that and then use that as data to have follow-up conversations at a much deeper level. Those conversations, believe it or not, will actually drive the design of the building. So, you know, when, again, to our families and friends listening at home, anybody that has not engaged in that and hasn't, you know, wants to, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or Tara's the chair of the school building committee. We are, we are happy to make sure that you are plugged into this because they're going to, they are going to take this feedback and they're going to use it for, you know, initial design. So there'll be so many iterations of that design over this whole process, so I don't want people to panic either and think that if their voice isn't heard now, it will never be heard and it's a one and done kind of process. It's not that at all. So lots of exciting things happening, lots of really good work ahead of us. We have until, we have until, I believe, October, the feasibility study, kind of designs and drafts will be done. So we'll be having much bigger conversations, I think, in the fall about what direction, six through twelve, seven through twelve, eight through twelve, how do we want to design it, what do we want our focus to be, with the goal of having it in front of our communities a year from now in the spring of 26th of vote. Lots of exciting work. I think it's going to really start coming fast and furious now. Tara, did I miss anything?
No, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. Any further, any questions on that? No. All right, that leads us into the report of the superintendent, career pathways at BMR High School.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Fallis, would you like to join us up front and take some time to review with us? We have some very, it's been an exciting time at the high school as far as grant opportunities that are in place now to support the acceleration of our career pathways work, but also our career preparedness work. So in your packets, as Jill's making her way up, you have a few different materials to help kind of tee up the conversation. You do have the latest flyer around environmental and life sciences. That's a new pathway that we're going to have at the high school. Jill and I were blessed enough to go to Athol High School last Thursday with the governor and the Secretary of Education where BMR was awarded the innovation pathways for environmental and life sciences. So that is in your packet. You also have an overview of a very kind of cheat sheet, if you will, of the program of study for next academic year at the high school that outlines the departments, the courses, the credits, the grade levels, and a recent survey that Ms. Fallis issued the students to assess their interest in additional elective opportunities. And so with all that, I'll kick this over to you, Ms. Fallis.
Thank you. I was fortunate enough to present some of this information to some people up here on Tuesday because we're going to be getting our scheduling piece. It was, this started, well, this has started, this has been ongoing, this probably three years of trying to get this innovative, innovation pathways going. Something that surprised us was that only twenty-five percent of the schools in Massachusetts are DESI innovative pathways designation, have that. So, and once we're in, we're ready to get going and I'm ready for the next one when we'll be adding advanced manufacturing to in the whole, once that, once that's open, I'm ready, I'm ready, we're ready to go. We've already got it mapped out. So through this, we started to look at particularly the increase. We'll have thirty more students in the eighth grade, so it's, that started us off and we were like, huh, that doesn't divide by five nicely. We're going to need more than one team, but we don't team at the high school. So went down this rabbit hole. We started with the survey that you had in there. We were pleased, initially we started with feedback from around one hundred and sixty-one students, added, not anything interested me, even though they had nineteen choices, to the list, and then we ended up pushing that out a couple more times and we have three hundred and eighty-one students. Now, if you add the seniors to that, we've got almost, I mean, we've got a high percentage of students who were able to get that. And surprisingly, not one senior took the survey, so I did scan through to see if we had any seniors in there. With that data, we kind of had a head scratcher. So how do we do that? There's not really one department that, oh, we need this teacher. So we started looking at some options, noticing that a number of our teachers who are currently teaching eighth grade electives could really step up to teach the electives that had some of our high priority feedback. So that's where we started. We have that. We started looking at what the career pathways would be as well. We have a website now and it is live, so if you go to our high school website, on the front page, it now says guidance and it now says pathways. And the pathways goes to a website that I'm pretty proud of and I had a proud mama moment when I went into one of the counselor's office today and she had the website up and was talking to a student and showing them the different pathways that was on there. Teary, no. So, yeah, so we're just very excited that we have this opportunity. We have a lot of money that we get to spend. We're already starting this to do some trial runs and, you know, we have over fifty electives for a school that is our size to have over fifty electives to offer to our students. I think that's pretty impressive. Increasing our AP offerings as well. But one of the most important pieces of this is with this integrated pathway that we have, this is for all students, this is not an honors track. And we wanted to make sure that all of our families know that this is not an honors track. This is something that if a student is passionate about what they're doing, we have the course, courses to offer that's going to keep them hopefully engaged and then getting through that class that they, maybe they don't really like geometry, sorry math people, but they just have to get through it because they know that once they get through it, there's going to be more options for them. So that is what, where we were. Can't tell you how appreciative we are with the additional staff, the science, as you can see from the numbers, there were heavy science and social studies for the top responses there. So we're going to keep pushing the expansion of opportunities for our students. And I know there's some, a vote later on the money part, so we're just going to keep coming. I just found out today, we also got a five thousand dollar grant. Five thousand dollar grant for PLTW to add a design and modeling, which will hit our engineering pathway for our eighth grade next year. So we just got this, so just keep.
I think you're up to ninety thousand in grants still, somewhere around there, right?
Ninety-nine thousand six hundred. I'm looking for that for, no. We actually have, and we still have a, we have one grant out for, with our, to support our civics project. That is a twenty-five thousand dollar grant as well for next year, so we're hoping that that will, that will come through and support our civics project in eighth and ninth grade. Awesome.
What's the civics project?
Just, we do a civics fair.
Okay, it is that.
And so for all that, and then transportation and all of that stuff, yep. The materials so that kids have that.
Same fair, like when they do it down the, that fair? The one that they do down the cafeteria?
The cafeteria, yeah. Yes.
That was impressive last year. It was, one of the judges, it was impressive.
Very good and maybe you'll get a swag bag.
Do it for the love.
I agree, Joe. Any questions?
Annie?
I think I answered some questions that people had on Tuesday, so I was happy about that. I really do encourage you and give me feedback on the website. It's a work in progress, but the guy, the counseling one and the pathways one, we're really, really proud of. And there is a, while it's not DESI designated, there is a visual and performing arts pathway on that, that we have, that we've built out biomedical science, public service and education, and like I mentioned, the manufacturing and engineering, which will be ready to go.
Can I ask a quick, Jill, on the guidance webpage, I believe that's where the program of study.
Yes.
Is posted. So just to anybody that's listening at home, if you're, you know, wondering what the high school has to offer, what those course opportunities are, I would encourage our families and particularly our younger students to go check that out. There is a bunch of information here regarding the different departments and the course offerings. It's impressive when you see all of the different opportunities that our students have as far as electives are concerned, core academics, the AP offerings, the expansion through that, some of the hands-on, you know, industrial arts, manufacturing one, manufacturing two, engineering essentials, robotics, principles of engineering, civil engineering. I mean, there's so much here for a small, comprehensive high school that I think really puts us on the map. So, you know, would encourage our community members to check that out now that we have fixed the website and that this information is updated. And thank you to our committee members for bringing that to our attention so that we actually have the right information parents can access.
The slideshow from my presentation on Tuesday is also available there.
But it's, it's nice to see this all in one place.
We all know what Jill did for February vacation.
That was my February vacation. But that's okay. This is going to be helpful and I saw it in action today. If anybody has questions, feel free to ask.
For families that don't know, because most of us know this, but like the guidance counselors will be sending out course scheduling or, I don't know if anyone is listening that wants to know how that works.
So, so next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of charger time, we will be meeting with each class individually. The level of support will increase as we continue through. So we'll be starting with our rising senior class, the class of 2026. That information has already gone out. I am going to tomorrow send out just the, here are the links, these are the things. Please talk to your, to your students, check out that one pager. We have copies of them available in, in the counseling department. Some kids may know that they can start registering. It is technically open, but we're not opening that until we have those conversations with the students.
When are they, what, is there a deadline for them to, to turn in their requests?
The, what is the Friday, fourteen, seven, twenty-first? Twenty-first. Yep. So there'll be, there'll be the, to go through all of that piece. A little more handholding, again, with the, with the, our rising ninth grade, but for the most part, they only have, most of that is already scripted for them. They really just need to make sure they're putting in the right levels into the piece and then what is the elective that they're looking for.
And just to our parents, if your child or children are anything like mine, mine submitted his form already without me seeing what courses he picked. The DeFalco family had a very difficult breakfast this morning and hence why it may have been a little delayed to our call. Say, no, 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 we don't submit that without the parents taking a look at the form.
To check it out.
Send it to me first.
We don't have a parent sign-off on this in X2, but for anybody's looking, go and ask your, your child to pull up X2 and on the left-hand side, it'll say requests. And if you go into requests, it will also have the recommendations for the teachers. The teachers will say, oh, really? They recommended you for honors. Hmm. What do we think about that? Do it.
I have a question. What if you do have a DeFalco? How do we, and the parents want to be involved? How do we switch this?
That, that's where you would.
They can go to guidance, right? Okay. And be like, my kid shows this, but it's not.
Absolutely. We, we encourage that, to have that. And if you would like to have that conversation. We have had instances where parents, we have called, parents have been like, hmm, you know, is this something that we really want to look at? Also, if anybody's taking an AP class, we have an AP contract this year, which is new.
Oh.
It is an AP contract. It is two-sided page of AP, the AP teachers got together and really wanted to talk about the rigor and there's a number of, I think there's like four or five spots where the parents and the student have to initial and sign-off to let them know, like you're aware that this is the schedule change, you're aware that there is an exam, you're aware, like all, just like, you're aware there's summer work. You know, you don't get to not do the summer work and then come in in August and say, I want to drop this class.
A question on the exam. Sorry.
Okay.
Now that they're, you're signing off on that, they're still not mandated to take the exam, they just have to be in the room, correct?
If you're taking the, if you're taking an AP course with minimal exceptions.
Yep.
You should be taking the AP exam. Now, what you do with those AP scores is up to you. So you can take the AP exam and never send the scores anywhere. You don't have to click on that if you don't want, if you don't want to.
I only bring it up because there's a fee with it. That's why I was bringing it up.
Yes, there is a fee. Yep, there is a fee. But that was also part of the, in the.
In the contract, yeah.
And for the rising eighth grade families that might be listening in going, how is my student going to know how to do any of this? There's another.
Hold their hand and take care of that. We have a, we have a step-by-step slideshow and, you know, and if I can get on, if I can get it on the website, I will do that. But there is on the website, there is, it's an older form, but it's still relevant and it's actually a video that will show you how and you can also see where that is. So talk to your kids, say what's going on with scheduling, what class you're going to pick.
Are you coming to the middle school to meet with the seventh grade students and to?
Seventh, we're actually, and we're hoping we can, we might be able to have the location changed and be at the high school so then we can have our students here to also give the opportunity to give tours. So that will be happening on Wednesday, March 26th. Wednesday, March 26th, 6:15, follows our building committee meeting, so it's a perfect time. So yes, and then we will be ready to move with that. By then, we'll be able to, now that the budget is clear, we can solidify our next steps as far as electives are concerned. For the most part, if you're a seventh grade parent, you're looking at, am I going to participate in band or chorus and would I like to take Spanish? in band or chorus, and would I like to take Spanish?
Any further comments? Well, thank you very much for all your hard work on this and continued hard work on this.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a great night. District of one.
Yes, what's going on with that? Save the date, everybody. Saturday, May 10th, and it is shaping up to be a pretty remarkable event again. We're really working to showcase our students' talents. We, with our athletic director's support, have scheduled home tennis match, home softball, home baseball, a track invitational meet. We have a student who wants to do a walkathon for a project that he's doing. We also have a group of educators who are working with our students to do a poetry slam more toward the end. We'll be attending a, a community event next week where we have a nice flyer made that will be asking our local businesses to kind of scan the QR codes, sign up, get a table for the event. It's shaping up to be, I think, a really, a really great turnout. Matt, what'd I miss?
That's about it, yeah. I think possible, there might be a few more things that we'll be adding on with some community partners. I think that was pretty much the long and short of it.
So save the date, everyone. It's gonna be a really, really great day where we get to really show off our kids, and so we're excited about that, excited about that opportunity. And then just a quick update on the health curriculum, so everybody knows where we are. We've had, since our last meeting in February, I think it was February 11th, we have had an opportunity to have many conversations with families, and we are continuing those discussions. We'll be meeting with our PTO on Monday of next week. We have a 6:30 meeting and have been asked upon, have been asked to go on the agenda, excuse me. So we're looking forward to those discussions. I will say that I am very appreciative of the time our families are putting into these conversations. They're not easy discussions by any sense, I think, for anybody to have, but I think the level of honesty is important. And so I look forward to our continued conversations next week with families. And the goal is to bring back to the school committee at our March 20th meeting, the revised materials and the recommended changes for the school committee to review and hopefully approve that evening. So a lot of work has gone into, into this since our last meeting. And one of the things you'll see, if we're ready for the, for the March 20th meeting, just a quick forecast, we're using the document that we presented to the school committee in October, and we are intentionally working off of that document. We're redlining things, we're adding new language in red, removing things, we have a summary slide. All that frankly has already been put together because we've already been meeting with parents and getting feedback and having conversations around that. So we will bring forward whatever iteration of that is ready for the meeting on the 20th of March, I hope, along with the updated materials, so you'll have a chance to see all of those as well. So the goal is to make sure everybody's comfortable with, you know, what we're doing moving forward the best we can. And we know that we are getting feedback on a multi, from a multitude of places, we shouldn't be doing any of this, to we should be doing all of it, and there should be no changes. So, right, kind of as expected, there's a lot of, people have very strong feelings on, on, you know, across the whole continuum. So we're working very hard to try to, you know, make it work the best we can for, for everybody. So I just wanted to give a quick update, so the school committee knows where we stand on that. Our family meeting that we had over February break, Dan and Matt were present for that, which I appreciate your voice at the table. And then, like I said, we have a PTO meeting on Monday.
All right. Our next up is state of the business office.
State of the business office.
Thank you. You have your, the personnel changes for March showing the appointments and resignations that took place in March to be put on file. And then the next is the forecast for FY '25. I don't see a lot of change happening. As you know, you know, I update this regularly to as current as we can be with the current expenditures and current encumbrances. And we're still hovering around the amount that we originally discussed as far as how we're gonna end the year. We look like we're in good shape. You will start in next month's presentation, start to see some budget, more budget movement because we're beginning our purchasing for the additional supplies and materials that we'll be using to help lessen the burden for FY '26. And as those come through, I'm gonna be doing budget journal entries to cover those at that point in time instead of waiting for the end of the year. With any questions on the report for this year? Okay. And then the budget journal entries, you can see there's only two, so things have smoothed out nicely. The only one that has a movement between any function codes is the first journal entry on here, journal entry number 134. And all that is doing is setting up the budget in the cable funds, fund. So we'd have a budget line that we could put expenses to when it came in. There was no budget set up initially in there. So that's really all that's doing. And we just updated some department codes under maintenance and equipment. Any question for Joe on the budget journal entries? I'll take a motion to approve the budget journal entries. Motion made by Tara Scobie.
Second.
Seconded by Ted. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We have an innovation grant?
Yes, there are two grants that we need the school committee to accept this evening, both of which Jill was actually referencing. The first is the Innovation Pathways Grant, that is the Environmental Sciences Grant for the high school. The second is the Work-Based Learning Implementation and Resource Grant for $21,000. Just a quick piece on this, this is a very important grant as it relates to our work preparing kids for workforce who are not going to two, four, two-year, four-year, or military. As the committee knows, we've had some conversations about, we really need to do a much deeper level of work transitioning those work-based students after they graduate and making sure they are ready to step into a career, right, a career kind of pathway. So we actually went for a grant to help us really leverage the MYCAP program, which is essentially a curriculum, a career readiness curriculum that we'll be doing with our classmen. So that $21,000 goes for the development of that, those materials, those resources, to make sure that we're really capturing that group of students that is, you know, has decided they want to go straight into the workforce. So we are trying to, again, it's, it's a blessing to be a smaller school, sometimes it can be a challenge, but we are trying very hard to, to really support and work with those students that want to go straight on the career track.
Did anything ever come of the conversations with the Blackstone Fire Department when they were asking to put signs up and advertise and?
Yeah, so I'm smiling because we're actually looking, we've got a variety of things we're looking to do. So we are looking to have our fire department, our police department, our, actually Dean Bank has offered to do financial literacy class. We also have a clinical group that wants to come in and do some work with our students. So what we're looking at, and then also should mention, he's not here, so he can be voluntold, but Scott's gonna do a small engine repair class, he just doesn't know it yet. He's on vacation this week.
He is.
He doesn't know yet, but yes.
Is his birthday coming up?
Yeah, it's February 10th.
What did I hear? Yeah.
So during charger time, we're actually looking to start running, we're gonna start with, we picked the week, it's in April, I just remember off the top of my head. One of the charger time cycles, you know, they run in a, like a seven-day cycle, the first day's advisory, so we'd start the days two through seven. And then just trying a week, so a week of, in their 30-minute classes, so a week of first aid, a week of first responder, a week of small engine, right, that kind of thing. So we're in the next stages of just getting those, those pieces in place.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, we're excited.
All right. I will entertain a motion to accept the innovation grant for $35,000.
So moved.
Motion made by Ted.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And I'll take a motion to accept the Work-Based Learning Implementation and Resource Grant for $21,000.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara Scobie.
Second.
Seconded by Kerry and Matt. Was that you Chuck?
It's Chuck.
You're throwing your voices over there. Okay, with that, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, it's unanimous. So with Matt, ah, sorry, Matt, with the facilities director on vacation, I will, you wanna give the report? Joe?
I'll put on my Scott Hebert hat. Some project Scott's been working on at the high school, as you know, there was a leak in the circulator pump. The update on that, the parts ordered, we expect that to be fixed within four to six weeks. During a recent power outage, the transfer switch for the lighting panel did not switch over to the power of the generator. FM generator found that the breaker inside the generator had been switched off, and nobody will say who did, but they turned it on and now it's working now. The men's room outside the gym had an uneven flooring, uneven floor was supposed to trip, tripping hazard, so Scott and his staff ripped up the flooring, re-leveled it out, re-cemented it, and now that's been repaired. Several plumbing issues were addressed during the break by Joe Roy's Plumbing, and the Universal Environmental Consultants conducted this six-month O'Hare inspection in February 25th, and didn't find any issues or damage to the asbestos within the building. For the middle school and the sprinkler system, new pressure gauges were finally installed. The hot water mixing valve was rebuilt during winter break. Carriages in the main floor academic wing were painted during the break, and broken, broken ping pong tables were replaced in the lobby, and an air hockey table was added. At the complex, the compressor motor was making a loud noise. AM compressor determined that the bearings in the motor were bad and need to be rebuilt, so that's in process. Again, the O'Hare report was also done at the complex, and no issues were found during that inspection. And during the week of February 24th through 28th, the complex suffered two separate power outages. During this time, the generator came online and the boilers kept running but seemed to be struggling to maintain adequate power to keep the full heating system running. He's gonna be looking, working with FM Generator to come and perform a load test to determine if there are any issues with that generator. At Millville Elementary School, the sprinkle pump test was conducted on February 18th, and no issues were found.
Joe, can I just ask for Scott to check the tennis courts? I got a text from a parent today that they thought there was a large crack that had developed on the tennis courts.
Okay.
I know it's been an ongoing.
It's a battle.
There, yeah. She said it was pretty much in the center, like you walk through the gate and just right off to the left.
Okay.
Jason and I have our own meeting. All right, so you, I had, thank you, Joe, for that update, and we do have a facilities request.
In the field trip.
Field trip, yes.
Yeah, that got added a little late.
Yeah.
Present that, Mr. Superintendent.
Sure, yeah, the field trip is just a Wizard of Oz play at the stadium here for third grade, and we're looking to go on March 28th.
Do we have enough chaperone coverage?
18.
Do you want to go?
Wow.
Dan, what's your, are the buses paid for by the PTO?
Or grant received? Yeah, it says that transportation, PTO. I didn't see it till just now either.
Well, they could just follow the yellow brick road.
They could walk.
I had to. Here we go. Purple and gold.
I'll make a motion to approve the field trip requests for our MES third graders.
Second.
A motion made by Erin, seconded by Tara Squid, the, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And a facilities use request. Joe?
The, looking to do a basketball summer camp for grades five through eight at the, be held at the regional high school in the gymnasium. This isn't until next year, which is July 28th to the 31st, Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 2:30. And they are aware of the cost and charge for holding the camp.
Make a motion.
Tara, a motion made by Tara Locken.
Second.
Seconded by Kerry. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
You said this for next year or this coming?
Well, I say next year. Yeah, in July.
Any further questions or discussion on that? Thank you, Mr. Catalin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, unanimous. All right. School committee forum, school committee members, does anyone have any? Chuck?
At the end of the sports season, do you do any evaluations? Did we talk about this in the past, about having surveys sent out to students?
Yes, they went to the students, the coach evaluations went out. Yeah, I think it was actually this week.
I don't think they went out.
They're going out either tonight or tomorrow.
There's a post, well, there's a posting on our website about, so.
I double-checked today, they'll be either sent out tonight or tomorrow.
Okay, all right, yeah. So they're coming then, but I did see the post that was out there about evaluations.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Chuck. Anyone else?
Just want to say thank you to Dr. DeFalco and Dr. Remka for upcoming this Saturday, they'll be coming to the PAC 3144 crossover. Have some scouts moving from the Cub Scouts into the troop. It's a pretty momentous occasion for the, for the boys and two girls that are doing it. They'll be the first, two first girls that, I mean, the first time that girls are moving from the PAC to a troop in Blackstone, so it's pretty, and Dr. DeFalco and Dr. Remka will be there to, to give their well wishes, and we appreciate that, so.
What is the, where is that? Is it?
That's gonna be happening at Divine Mercy, at the parish hall on Saturday.
Time.
Everywhere from 11:00 to 1:00.
Is it open for?
The ceremonias, yes, which should commence around 12:00. There's a luncheon before that's by invite only.
Okay.
Dan, check your email. Check your emails.
I was actually putting that out, if anybody was watching that.
Sure, it will be actually live streamed, so thanks to, you know, same folks that do it live.
I was aware, I was just trying to.
It'll be live streamed for the, for the community and for those abroad.
It's a good point, though, to remind me to check my email, but I was aware of that one.
Never knew what you're missing in the.
Google Calendar.
Got a calendar now. Anything else? Everyone, I'd just like to thank Eric Highstand for the donations for the computer equipment, and Julie Lucia for starting that scholarship fund on behalf of her late son, and the administration and the committee. This was a rather seamless budget process, which isn't always the case. And, you know, I was just doing a little bit of, we're always talking about the budget in different angles, and, and the, the, the additional contribution is usually the big argument, and it increased by $16,000 over last year, like, which is nothing in the big picture of things, and decreased with Millville by, by $30,000. And that's just simply the difference in the enrollment of Blackstone students and Millville students. And, I mean, it's, it's crazy that, to me, that like the additional mandate by the state was $467,000 for Blackstone, and our total increase for that town is 4,700, it's like 4,000 more. That, that's like unheard of, and, and Millville's actually decreased. And so I thank the administration and the, and the committee for, I mean, we reduced it by 2.3 million last year, and, you know, it's, it's, and we're holding a line, so I thank everybody for their hard work on this. And with that, I will take a, the next meeting that we have is March 20th, 2025. If there's no further comment, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara Scobie.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Good evening.